We are now back in session and we are now under item thirteen, which is approvals. The first item is item A, that is OC two, the reappointment of Leonard Waits to the Police Oversight Board, I move confirmation. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Winter, any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that passes unanimously. Item B is OC three, reappointment of Johnny G. Armio to the Police Oversight Board, I move confirmation. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Harris, any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that passes unanimously. Item C is EC four thirty-nine, the Solid Waste Management Department Priority Objective, FY seventeen, Goal Five, regarding the cost-effective air quality impacts and carbon footprint effects of using compressed natural gas in lieu of diesel fuel, I move receipt be noted. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Harris, any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that passes unanimously. Item D is EC four eighty-three, that is Counselor Davis.
I'll move approval for Counsel Davis.
We have a motion and a second for EC four eighty-three, approval of the First Supplemental Agreement with Triple H Solar LLC. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed, that carries unanimously. Counselor Davis, we took care of that for you, thank you. Next item is EC nine, Mayor's Appointment of Jolene Woolley to the Zoning Board of Appeals, I move confirmation. We have a motion and a second by Counsel Vice President Harris, any questions?
Mr. President, yeah, I do have a question for the administration or staff, I don't know if anybody here from planning, but I know that staff is probably familiar with these appointments, the Board of Appeals, and I was hoping I might be able to speak to some of the applicants, but most importantly, we did have some, have some little bit of research done on the rules for this, there's a should within fourteen eighteen seven one C about trying to appoint members ninety days before their terms start in order to allow them time to study the duties of the Board. Do we have a plan to, I guess, do a crash course for the Board members before they attend their first hearing?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Benton, Mr. Campbell, the head of the Planning Department, was here until the break, and I don't know if he plans to come back, but in the meantime, I know that two of the folks, and I don't have their names in front of you, the two gentlemen do come from the worlds of architecture and engineering buildings, so, and I think Ms. Woolley has also been sort of active in the planning process, so I think we can definitely set up a sort of crash course, as you suggest, to make sure that they hit the ground running.
And I agree, I think these three appointments that we have before us tonight all have fairly, fairly extensive background. I think that, what I'm thinking of specifically are the duties of the Board and how, I will just, I'll put it this way, at the risk of oversimplification, that on some of our volunteer boards having to do with planning and even the Planning Commission, at times there've been in the past, I guess, a misunderstanding about whether a member is there to judge or maybe improve or criticize a project or respond to neighborhood input on a project, whereas the duties are pretty cut and dried, and they typically don't include any of those things. So, I guess that was my only real concern about it, I don't have a problem with any of the appointees, but it is important, I think, that they understand those distinctions between maybe what we would prefer to see in a project and what is the minimum requirements are, which is normally all they're being judged on. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? See none, we have a motion and a second for approval of EC nine, the Appointment of Jolene Woolley to the Zoning Board of Appeals, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that passes unanimously. We now are under item F, EC eleven, the Mayor's Appointment of Timothy Waters to the Zoning Board of Appeals, I move confirmation. We have a motion and a second, any questions?
Uh, Mr. President, just a comment, yeah, I appreciate the two architects, and I think this appointee was actually served as a leader of the local architects group, but I just want to say, I encourage my fellow architects to get involved in city government, it's really, it's interesting work.
Thank you, Counselor Benton, we have a motion and a second for EC eleven, the Appointment and Confirmation of Timothy Waters to the Zoning Board of Appeals, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that passes unanimously. We are now under item G, EC twelve, the Mayor's Appointment of Robert Rayner to the Zoning Board of Appeals, I move confirmation. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Benton, any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that passes unanimously. We are now under final actions, item C, Counselor Peña, R dash two.
Thank you, Mr. President, R dash two is establishing a legislative policy for the City of Albuquerque for the two thousand and eighteen New Mexico State Legislature, I move a due pass.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Gibson.
And then I have a floor sub, I think it's in everybody's iPads unless you have it in front of you, so just for clarification purposes, because of time constraints, I actually put forth last year's legislative priority, it kind of mirrored it, knowing that, you know, this would give us the opportunity to have a chance to introduce a floor sub that included not only the priorities for the City of Albuquerque, but priorities for each of the council districts, and it gave me an opportunity to, you know, go around and ask everybody what their priorities were to include as part of this, so I think with all the recommendations that were made, you know, it seems like a hefty bill, but, you know, overall, the City of Albuquerque, the Mayor's Office has their priorities, I think we're pretty much in agreement in terms of what they envision moving forward, and then as well, we all have our council district priorities that are included in here, so with that, if there's any questions, I think there's, there's actually a floor sub.
Let's move the floor substitute first, Counsel.
Okay, I move the floor sub for R two.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Harris for floor substitute R dash two, any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that passes. And we have some amendments now, Counselor Peña?
I actually don't have an amendment, but I have this Counselor Harris and Benton.
Okay, let's go to Counselor Benton, and then Counselor Harris, they're co-sponsors.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, and this amendment was drafted by the administration, we had some discussion about it today at the Intergovernmental Committee, and we can have the administration speak to this as well, but this is very much in line with Counselor Peña's floor sub anyway, and just kind of puts public safety a little bit more front and center as best as I can describe it, but I'll leave that up to the co-sponsor of the amendment and the administration to elaborate.
Counselor Harris.
I'll just go ahead and defer to Mr. Stewart, if he wants to talk about this a little bit.
Go on, proceed.
Mr. President, Counselors, this resolution has a lot of good items in it, I think it covers a wide variety of areas that the administration supports, that council supports, we did think it was important to restructure it, to really prioritize some of the public safety initiatives and really highlight those, when we're going to the legislature and we're making the case on these issues, it is a priority, and we really want to be able to just kind of have it structured in a way to emphasize that public safety is priority number one, it doesn't mean that the other aspects of the resolution aren't also important, but that's what the amendment does.
Counselor Benton.
And just to point out one item that we, that I think we all agree is, although it doesn't, people don't always think of it first when they think about public safety and our city's public safety priorities, it's certainly important to many of us who have been working on the issue over the years, and so we did, we, administration's draft already did include alcohol and drug treatment, and we added the words behavioral health to that, just to emphasize that we are working closely with the county through the Behavioral Health Initiative on behavioral health, I'm really encouraged by the cooperation between ourselves and the county on that, and it's such an important part of public safety, especially when you consider all of the resources of public safety that go into just encountering, you know, all sorts of random situations on the street with people who are suffering from a behavioral disability, so we did put that at the top of the list, I want to make clear that the list of one through six under public safety priorities is not intended to be a prioritization in and of itself, but it's listing six very important components that we support.
Are there any questions? On the floor amendment, Counselor Benton, do you want to move a floor amendment?
Yes, I'll move floor amendment number one.
We have a motion and a second, Counselor Peña.
So I just wanted to add, you know, we had the discussion this afternoon, and I really appreciate, this goes on back to what we had discussed, you know, I found it very important that, you know, and part of why I put public welfare and safety is just because kind of the discussion we had earlier about houses and how we just do enforcement, you know, I just want to make it clear that from the perspective of any resolution that I would be sponsoring, that I want to ensure that, you know, public safety is, as Counselor Benton stated, it's bigger than just the enforcement part of it, it's really, to me, my first priority is really to address the underlying issues that we have in our community, and I think that's what's going to help improve crime in our city, although I know it's necessary right now to make sure that we enforce what we have, and I appreciate the administration for taking that into consideration and doing that, and as Counselor Benton said as well, you know, the one through six is a prioritization, but, you know, I really felt that it was important for the behavioral health and the alcohol and drug treatment services to be front and center, because this is something that we've been addressing since the DOJ has come into play, and that's been key for us, so, thank you again.
Any other questions on the floor amendment? We have a motion and a second for floor amendment number one to R eighteen dash two, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed say no, that carries unanimously. And I've got to suspend the rules, so I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of allowing this resolution to be adopted at the same evening it's substituted. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Peña, this is requiring two-thirds votes, any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed, that carries unanimously, we are back on the bill, Counselor Peña to close.
I urge your support.
We have a motion and a second on R dash two, it's substituted and amended, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Counselor Peña, for your work. We are now under item D, Counselor Peña and Sanchez, R dash three, Counselor Peña.
R dash three is expressing the city's support for proposed Atrisco West Route sixty-six Main Street organization, this just gives us the status showing that the city supports the community efforts to establish West Route sixty-six as a Main Street.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions? I'd like to just make a couple of comments, I want to thank the residents of Albuquerque's West Side and the West Central Business Merchants for many years for, you know, advocating and supporting a lot of the initiatives and changes that we have seen on Albuquerque's West Side, and I want to thank Counselor Peña for the work that we have done together along with the community, we have the new library at Albuquerque's West Central, the new fire station, and we are transforming that area to become vibrant, and, you know, we see the areas like Nob Hill and the Edo District and other quadrants of the city, and hopefully one day we will see Albuquerque's West Central area live up to those same expectations, and from the work that the people have done, I believe that will happen soon. Any other questions? Counselor Borrego.
I'm glad to see this, and I do support it, I just wondered, the proposed Atrisco West Route sixty-six, what area to what area, is that from Atrisco all the way to the city limits, or, okay, just checking.
And Counselor Borrego, I also want to thank you, years ago when we worked together, you did serve on the Metropolitan Redevelopment Board, working with us on the redevelopment of West Central, and we did some amazing things together, so thank you for your support. Any other questions? See none, we have a motion and a second for R dash three, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that carries unanimously. We are now under the last item, which is item E, Counselor Harris, R dash two five six.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, this is a resolution I did by request of Richard Berry as one of the last things I did as a budget chair, and now, of course, we have a different administration, but this is a resolution, R two fifty-six, establishing priorities for the two thousand and nineteen capital improvements plan, defining the criteria to be used in reading project proposals, assigning waste criteria, et cetera, I move a due pass.
We have a motion and a second, it looks like there is amendment.
And I talked to someone from the administration that had, I said they had an amendment, do we have a sponsor for this amendment?
Yes.
Okay, who's sponsoring, okay, I'll turn it over to Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Counselor Harris, this amendment has to do with some discussions that I had early on with the administration, and I appreciate their working on it and formulating the draft that we started with, and this has to do, just a little bit of background, I was at a transportation conference last fall with some really, really interesting discussions about equity in transportation decisions, and also related to the issues of gentrification that some of the booming cities are struggling with right now, but the presentation was by a person who had served as the interim Public Works Director of the City of Oakland, and had been charged with, by the City of Oakland Leadership, Mayor and the Council, with taking a look at how prioritization of projects was done according to need, and not just, you know, I think the terminology is equity as opposed to equality, so, you know, many of our communities in the city, we all know, are, struggle more, they're historically more disinvested than others, and this amendment really is about trying to address that, so I'll just read it really quickly, because it's fairly short. On page four, line one, insert section seven, "It shall be the priority of the City of Albuquerque in the two thousand and nineteen GO Bond Program to fund programs and projects in underserved communities relating to public safety, senior community centers, libraries, housing, transportation, including streets and public transit, economic development, and community enforcement," and so that's the sum total of what this does, but again, I appreciate the interest of the administration in this, and I think it's important consideration as we prioritize these projects.
We have a motion and a second for floor amendment number one to R seventeen dash two fifty-six, Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Counselors, I guess I need to understand what underserved neighborhood means, so you take my neighbor, my neighborhood, some of them, some of the, we have issues in other areas we don't, take community centers, I have one community center in my whole district, so, which is also the multi-generation center, so it's a senior center too, so would that mean that is underserved as far as community center, because some of you all have five, six, seven community centers in your area, so I'm not sure if I understand the word underserved mean, does it mean like, if someone can explain that to me, because I'm underserved when it comes to community centers.
Counselor Borrego, and then we'll go to Counselor Jones, Counselor Borrego first, and Counselor Jones?
May I just want to add on to this?
Go ahead.
If I may add on to that, my district that I represent also only has one library, one library, one community center, and one senior center, that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Jones, now we'll go to Counselor Borrego, and then Counsel Vice President Harris.
Counsel President and Counselor Benton, I have to agree with Counselor Winters on this, because when I think about my district, I think about transportation and public transit, and I think about, you know, we're in a critical need on Paseo, Irving, McMahon, Montano, I mean, we, if, I haven't done this before, I've invited you all to come out at between the hours of seven and nine in the morning, and four and six-thirty at night, and it's one lane to Montana Ranch to Montana West, and literally people, you know, we have no libraries, by the way, so I just, I guess I'd like to know as well, what is that definition?
Should I respond, or I know what the people want to say? Let's go, I'll go to Counselors, and we'll go back to Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I have a little bit of both, my district has some areas where people, you know, if looking at this economically, in terms of poverty versus people who, you know, have high earnings under the rooftops and so forth, but I looked at this as more of just as a policy statement, because it's not like, for instance, the, what we have with regard to renewable energy, we have a certain set aside, and everyone knows what renewable energy is, with regard to open space, we have a certain set aside, everyone knows what that is, this is more of a policy that we're going to recognize that when, where there's certain needs, that we should try to solve those needs, is one of the many things that we do when we're negotiating a package, but I don't think this stops Counselors from doing what we always do, which is try to get together and try to equitably divide the bond package based on a number of policies, this would just be one of them in my view, so for that reason, I think it's okay, I can support it.
Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. President, and so with regard to the concerns of Counselor Winter and Borrego, in no way does this intend to say one district, and that absolutely was in no way any attention, and it doesn't say anything about that, it talks about underserved neighborhoods, so certainly, I would agree, Counselor Winter, I have, in District Two, we have, I think, most of the original community centers were built in District Two, and they were small, they were kind of humble centers, but we've got a lot of them, and most of them, to the city's credit, have been renovated and improved and fixed up, and they're all fine, and that, I would not purport to say that one neighborhood should have special treatment in any way with all of these things, but I think the consideration as to, let's just talk about transit, for instance, some neighborhoods are underserved and historically disinvested as well, and their populations are more in need perhaps, transit than other neighborhoods, so these kind of decisions should be made, I think, with some data about what the needs of the community are, and that should be broken down at a much lower level than a council district, so that's simply the intent, to put that at the forefront and to be considered when we're making decisions, because, yeah, we do have nine council districts, with regard to some of the street improvement projects, I don't know whether this would change that, but there has been a tendency to just divide them up all even steven by council districts, you know, some council district might have stronger, bigger needs as Counselor Borrego was describing than others with regard to city services, so, I know we do a certain amount of this, but I think it's important that it be stated within the CIP policies.
Are there any other questions on floor amendment number one? We have a motion, Counsel Peña.
I would just say that I support the floor amendment, you know, when you talk about underserved communities, when you actually ask the question about defining it, you know, I got online here, you know, because really, there should be a mechanism as to where we define it, because I know that some communities like yours, you know, it's, it was hard, I chuckled, I'm sorry, because it was hard to, you know, the community center you have is like times ten, you know, it's through the roof in terms of really the services and amenity that are provided there, so anyway, you know, but areas where, you know, people don't have access to other things, and the incomes and services and healthcare, you know, so that's, and I don't know if we can define it as part of this, but really, those are things that really should be given consideration, and if there's pockets of those, you know, there's pockets of poverty, and you can define where some of those underserved communities are, and you're right, they're not all just in my neighborhood, there's some in the Northeast Heights where there's pockets, and those areas maybe that would give us an opportunity to look at those areas and really focus and see what we can do to make those connections, you know, especially when we're talking about the art project and how we make the connections in transportation, those are the people that we want to connect to that transportation so that they have access to the same amenities and services the rest of the people in the City of Albuquerque do, so I would support your amendment.
Counselor Borrego, and then Counselor Jones.
Counselor Benton, I guess I'm trying to, I want to support this, but I guess I'm trying to understand the definition of underserved, and it seems to me like you're talking about sensitivity to certain issues within certain areas, and not necessarily just maybe redevelopment areas, is that, I mean, is that fair to say regarding a certain issue, is that fair?
Yeah, I, you know, I'd like to hear from the administration as well, but I would just say that, you know, certainly, some communities are better served than others if you look at this list, a very general list of city services and city projects, so, yeah, I mean, as again, we are, and we do a pretty good job of trying to look out for, for instance, transportation deficiencies, and we have the advantage of also having the Council of Governments, which does a lot of numbers crunching and work around that and planning around transportation, so that would certainly differ, you know, across the city, again, at the same time, Counselor Peña's example of tie-ins to ART, you know, ART's intended to be a spine, how do we look at all the regular bus routes that will tie into it, and where are the strongest needs, where are the largest deficiencies there in terms of service to populations that, who we can identify that need it the most, so this is what it's about.
So, I guess my understanding is that you're giving direction to the staff to look at certain areas or all the areas and determine with some sensitivity, what is the appropriate funding for a specific area depending on the issue, is that my understanding?
What is the funding for a particular service of government that we analyze that by need?
Okay.
And be, and try to be, data and use a methodology that can kind of look a little bit deeper into the need, but I think, I'd like to hear from the administration.
Let me go to Counselor Jones, and we will go to the administration.
Thank you, Mr. President, I think it's quite obvious from listening to the people up here on the dais, we, this is far too ambiguous, we have no idea what it means, we have no idea how to judge it, we have no idea how to score it and put in the criteria. My idea of needs is far different from Counselor Borrego's idea of needs, I mean, my district is in the area around it, middle of the city, more or less, I mean, we're not just on the east side, we're not just on the north side, we're in some very lower income areas also, we have one senior center, it is probably the most used senior city in the city, far too small, far underserved for the number, because the people who live in that area of town are just like me, they're old and getting older, with any luck, and they are utilizing senior centers today, we don't have enough in that area of town. Counselor Winter absolutely has a beautiful new center, but it doesn't cover everyone, we have huge numbers in our districts, we have other districts who have more centers, more of this, more of that, is, how are we going to base it, are we going to base it on income, is that really how we want to serve our people, are we going to do an average income in the area, or are we going to look at the particular area for lower-income people, for more needy people, I have a lot of needy people who live in an area that people consider to be a high-end, wealthy or upper-middle-class area, but they are still in need of help and assistance, there are people who live very near me, older people, who are now in a situation where they can't drive, they would like to drive, they would like to use a bus system, we are totally underserved by this bus system in the north part of the city, and most especially in the northeast part of the city, how are we going to judge this, how are we going to take care of the working people who live in the reasonably wealthy northeast area of the city and the east side of the city, who work at the base, who work at the airport, at the airport, who would like to ride the transit? The transit is not designed only for poor people. The transit is designed to make our city better and reduce our costs for more streets, more maintenance, and more, obviously, pollution. How can we say we are only going to provide the needed care in underutilized areas when we can't define underutilized? So, I can't support this until we can, and more than welcome to have supportive of coming back with amendment to this after it passes, and put in a good definition of what underutilized in areas is, because I don't think we agree on that, and I don't think we can set that criteria if we don't know what that really means. So, I can't support this, Councilor Benton. Thank you.
Let's go to the administration, and I'll come back to Council Vice President Harris. Ms. Nayer?
Thank you, Council President Sanchez. I'd just like to start by sort of re-centering us in what Councilor Harris mentioned, which is that the actual amendment is just to add this item to the mini-pages of criteria that are in the back of the capital improvements plan bill. So, this is not some kind of trump card, this doesn't replace all of these criteria here, it simply adds to them. There are a lot of words in these criteria that are probably susceptible to interpretation, but this has always been the practice of this council, is to work through these criteria and allow the administration to use them in prioritizing projects. The word at issue, underserved, I think has a plain meaning, which means there's a disconnect between the services available and the demand or need for those services. In my view, and in the view of the administration, it is not solely about income or any of those other criteria, it's about that match between service and need. So, I would agree that there's probably a myth out there that none of you believe, but that a lot of the general public may believe, that there are served districts and unserved districts, or rich districts and poor districts, but you all know well that there are mismatches between services and needs in each of your districts. And the simple goal of this amendment is to make sure that we're thinking about what exists and what the needs are when we're trying to prioritize capital projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, speaking offline with the sponsor of this amendment, he's willing to accept a friendly amendment, which I think might solve a lot of this. There's one word in the amendment that I didn't like, which is the word "the," the fourth word in. "It shall be the priority of the city of Albuquerque." I thought that could almost be construed as a trump card. So, with Council Benton's approval, as a friendly amendment, it shall be a priority of the city of Albuquerque. So, I think that-
I think that works.
Okay.
And just, if you look through the bill, you know, there are a number of places where they speak about a priority, and then they proceed to say the priority, but this is fine, you know. Again, there's nothing, you know, certainly, there are some disinvested and underserved neighborhoods in my district, and depending on the category that we're talking, various categories that this bill covers, I certainly agree that they exist in every council district. So, it was certainly not intended to give any preference in that sense, and I think Ms. our CAO explained it very well, so.
Councilor Winter?
Thank you, Mr. President. And Council Benton, I do agree with you, but I think every district is underserved in some form or fashion.
Right, I agree.
And we need to remember that all the years, we've had, there used to be years we had big capital budgets. We don't have a big capital budget anymore. We're all fighting over this little bit amount of money in this little pot. And I understand what you're trying to do, but as a city councillor, I think we all know what our needs are in our neighborhood, and I think that's where we're trying to help find those needs. And so, that's why I'm not going to support the policy, because of, just because of that, there's not enough money. I mean, if there was bunches of money, I think a policy like this would work, but I consider my district underserved in certain things and not in other things, just like you all do. So, you know, that's the reason that I can't support it.
And I have a couple of comments on this bill, or this amendment. I will support the amendment, but I do have some concerns, because we have many challenges across the city. And as Councilor Winter stated, the capital budget a few years back was $160 million that we would take to the voters. I believe this last time was $118 million, and a lot of things that were priorities were left out. And it's difficult when you have a limited amount of resources, and you're trying to prioritize all these different projects. Plus, there's been projects over the years that have kind of moved up the ladder, where they now are a priority. Are we going to put those to the side again, when, you know, they finally made it to the top of the list? It's a big challenge, but I, you know, I think I will support the language in here. I think it's fair, it's equitable, but we're going to have to work together in assuring that with the limited resources we have available, that we prioritize what is the most important things when it comes to our capital budget. You know, we're talking about more police cars, the community centers are starting to see where in terror, senior centers. The needs are tremendous throughout the city, and we're really going to have to work together because of the limited resources. Councilor Borrego?
Councilor Benton, I'm really struggling with this in terms of supporting it. I would like to support it, but I, I mean, all of these categories, public safety, senior community centers, libraries, transportation, public transit, all of those relate to my district. And I'm on the edge of the city, and so, I, you know, it seems to me like the capital improvements program already does this, in a sense. So, I'm really struggling to support it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for floor amendment number one to R-17-256. All those in favor signify by saying yes, and raise your hand. Yes? Opposed?
No.
That carries on a six to three vote. We are back on the bill. To R-256, Council Harris to close.
I heard your support.
We have a motion and a second for R-256, as amended. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes? Opposed?
No.
That passes on a six to three vote. If there is no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.